Good morning, we're now called to order. Any items from the public? Hearing none. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Been properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. You have any questions on the purchase order log? Oh? Good morning, Mr. Weinbruner, we have several internal budget revisions.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, you have six today. The first two are from the assessor, Larry Hess. He's requesting to decrease line item 105, increase 108, to cover shortage in that line for overtime by thirteen hundred dollars. The second is decreasing line item 342 to increase line 341, which is for his supplies. You have a budget revision from Sheriff Robert Blair. He's asking to decrease line 341 and increase 214, which is to cover travel expenses, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar revision. And then you have two from Tim Sayah. Decreasing line 230 to increase line 218. That is to cover postage, the amount of five hundred dollars. Decrease line 230, increase line 214 by three thousand dollars to cover travel expenses. And then finally, Chief Court Marshal Mike Lang. To decrease line 345, increase line 221 by three thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars for training expenses, for an upcoming training they have for them.
Very good, thank you. Change of status, we have a new hire recommendation received from Tim Sayah, Community Corrections Director for Madeline Walters. As a peer recovery coach effective February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, with an annual salary of forty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Change of status received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Kevin Miller, to be transferred from Prosecuting Attorney's Office as a criminal investigator to a court security as chief deputy court marshal effective February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. With a salary range change from eighty-eight nine sixty-eight to eighty-one one twenty. Change of status received from Larry Hess, Assessor for Casey Capistran. Clerk for receive clerk to receive a salary increase from thirty-six thousand to thirty-nine thousand, effective February one, twenty twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Chase Weinbruner, IT Manager for Andrew Rosen, IT Specialist Three, effective January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Letter of retirement received from Michael Withrow, WVU Extension for Bernadette Whalen. Administrative Assistant, effective January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Shelly Schopert, Circuit Clerk for Christine Dunn, effective February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Jennifer Swisher, Emergency Services Director, Emergency Communications Director for Margaret Packer. Effective January fourteenth, I'm sorry, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. And I have a memo from Joe Kenz, Prosecuting Attorney, and Mr. Weinbruner, will you go over that with us, please?
Yes, sir, the prosecutor is requesting some administrative changes on his job descriptions, which will allow him to move forward with posting some open positions he has. These are strictly administrative, he's not requesting any salary changes. These are re-titling and re-grading of the victim witness advocate. He's also requesting to erase a position that's no longer used by them, which was the Victim Assistant Program Director. He is requesting a re-titling of the Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Two, to Senior Prosecuting Attorney, and then re-titling the Senior Prosecuting Attorney to Chief Assistant Prosecuting Attorney. If approved, he will utilize those new titles to move forward with his hiring.
He's got a little bit of shuffling going on.
But it is all, it's, it's all budget neutral, so the grades are staying the same and the salary numbers are staying the same.
Very good.
Strictly administrative.
Let me get caught up to you here. Okay. Approval of the minutes, January thirtieth, commission meeting, everyone was present, so we'll leave that one in. The board review, Vice President Catlett was not present in the afternoon, so let's go ahead and pull that, and we'll vote on that right now if Vice President Catlett would abstain on this vote, please.
Certainly.
I will need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, improve the afternoon minutes.
Second?
It's been properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Okay, we have a cancel check for the, from the clerk's office. Send your packet. That's quite the process to go through for a cancel check. Have one voided. We have a bond reduction for Southbrook, Section One, Phase One, final, and it is tied to a BCP file number twenty-two oh two dash zero six three. Tied to BCP file number twenty-one oh seven dash two forty-six and twenty-one oh five dash one seventy-six. That's bond number zero seven nine eight three zero eight, and the engineering is requesting that approval. So I do need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second, Dan.
Properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you, Doug. Next up is our assessor, Larry Hess. And Larry, if you don't mind, I'm going to recuse myself and leave the room during this section, being two of those exonerations for my wife and I's property, all right?
Morning.
I guess you gotta deal with me, Larry, that's a shame, isn't it?
Oh, God.
Yeah. No, just go ahead and present your golfers.
All right. I do have nine personal property exonerations we had to correct. And had to bring them to you to get your approval this morning, and for the reasons that's listed there, a couple of them are double billed and keyed in the air, but all nine of those, if you add them up, comes up to two thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and nine cents for those nine exonerations.
Motion to approve.
Of a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose.
Okay.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And the only other thing I have is, we did have two real estate exonerations for Mr. Oakenhour, and his homestead got removed for two years by mistake for some reason. And so we had to correct those two for twenty-three and twenty-four tax year. Total amount of those two is four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents.
I can verify his age, he does qualify.
He does.
So a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Thank you, sir.
Motion carried.
Thank you. You all have a good morning?
Thank you.
You as well.
We gonna let him back in, or you think he should?
I don't know, is he old enough?
Oh, yeah. Check his teeth.
Let me see your driver's license, so we can test your age, is old enough for homestead exemption, please? They already vouched for you.
Thank you.
Trust me, I am.
All right. Board meeting reports. Commissioner Boyd?
I did not have any meetings to attend since the last meeting.
Okay.
I attended Planning Commission, it'd been about six and a half years since I sat on that board, and it's kind of like riding a bike, kind of fell right back in, I mean, there's the, the learning curve of learning the properties and, and the, the actions that are happening, but the process has not changed very much, I mean, it's the names of some of the things, of the way they do the plats, final plat, and some of the organizational stuff has changed, but a very well-run meeting, great staff, and I'm very excited to be back involved with the Planning Commission.
Yeah, and we're glad to have you there, and you're exactly right, this staff does an excellent job there.
Commissioner Whitaker?
I had no meetings. I did have some meetings on Tuesday, matter of fact, Sewer Board met, they're meet twice a month, and you know, I talked to you all a couple of weeks ago about the issue of the mandate from the EPA about stormwater entering our system in heavy rain periods. And the most critical area of all is the town of Hedgesville, which is dear to my heart since I grew up there, but I can understand why that it is, so that is the area that's going to be the most difficult to correct as we go forward in the next few years, to correct this problem. It's, it's amazing, because the pump stations down below, geographically is lower than the town, but the town holds water tremendously, and always has, so it's going to be interesting to see how we can resolve that, but there was a lot of good discussion about how to go about it, and hopefully we can make that happen.
Were they, are they looking for where infiltration is, or when it's coming in?
At this point, we've got to correct the issues on our end first, and then if it's still not at the level it needs to be, then we're going to have to go into private homes and investigate the situation.
All they have to do is do a smoke test on a manhole, light open, where all the, all the water's coming from.
So, yeah, we've got a really good firm that did this study and all, and is on top of it, and you know, it's going to be a process, it's going to take over twenty years to accomplish this to add our whole system, so, but we're headed in the right direction to correct it, so. And then always we have a stormwater meeting that follows the Sewer Board, it's the same board member circle and that as well, so they meet afterwards, and the appeal that was made on our individual county-wide MS four permit was heard before the Appeal Board, and we're going to wait on the results of it, so we think it's going to lend in our favor, and we should know something here in the next few weeks, so hopefully, to get our individual permit back in, you know, in, in place, so. And also, HD, you did have a meeting, because you met with me and Matt, and we met with Rick Trinari. We had a meeting last week after we finished our session here on Thursday, and that wasn't last Thursday, it was this Tuesday.
It was this Tuesday, yeah.
It was this Tuesday. I wasn't here last Thursday afternoon.
Right.
Rick is a member of the Museum Board, but he's also a member of the Norwalk Car Group, and there's been a lot of talk, in my mind, about what to do with the bank building on one-ten West King Street. Are we going to sell it, are we going to use it for the museum, the intent was to make it a museum. And so, in meeting and trying to clarify that, what is the greatest need right now, I, I, as a result of our meeting, I think the Norwalk Car Club would like to see that path continued, that, that become the museum, at least to the point that it would hold the Norwalk car, and we talked in terms of maybe making that a transportation museum of Berkeley County on the first floor of that building, and pursuing that, as opposed to moving it down to the Roundhouse area. And I think the Norwalk Car Club would, would rather see it go that direction. For selfish reasons of my own, we, as a commission, have a big responsibility, I think, in the future of maintaining our courthouse, our historic courthouse, that's sitting there empty right now, and we've got to work some way to get that thing in use, to maintain it, and I think by having the bank there and in use as a museum, the parking area that comes with the bank, it would work well for us in terms of trying to also couple that with that project, to make the courthouse a, a working building again. And so they're going to both take, Rick's going to take it back to the Norwalk Club, Matt's going to take it as, back to, and HD, back to the Museum Board, but I think that is the direction that we probably, in, in our minds, the four of us right now, would be the right direction to go. You agree, HD?
Yes, and you know, we, there actually Crabtree had done a Yes, and you know, we, actually Crabtree had done a study on that building already. So we do have some preliminary numbers. That's for the whole building. But that was done a few years ago, so it might have to be relooked at to see if the numbers have changed. That, that was three years old at this point, but. We take another look at that and then see where our numbers are and then figure out where we're going to get the money from.
It seems certain to me that the fastest way to get the Norwalk Car back in West Virginia in Martinsburg is to pursue this process. But also what really is the key, if we sell that bank building and lose all that parking, it's going to hurt the chances of, of utilizing the courthouse to any extent. Because you're going to have, what, three spaces out in front of it at best? And I, I really think, I would hope that the rest of the commission would, would agree with this and maybe we could get them to move forward. But that, that was the result of our meeting. Thank you, sir.
But that was the original intent of the commission was be able to use that building in particular to bring the Norwalk Car back, but also. To be able to use it to share the rest of the history of our, of our county and city. But, you know, what I kind of like about this whole thing is we've, we've been all over the place with this. You know, we've approached Monument Corporation about, you know, possibly trading properties to be able to get it on a Winchester Avenue piece of property. It's, it's been looked at in the Frog and Bridge shop. It's been looked at the Steel Skeleton Building there. It's been talked about creating and building a new roundhouse and perhaps having something there. So I, I like that this, this thing's kind of been vetted out and we're right back where we were. So I, I like that and from a security point of view, I think that it's much, much safer having that car. In the 110 building than down at the roundhouse with.
And to be honest with you, the Norwalk Car Group was not in favor of that anyway, you know, and it, it, it all takes money, but the, the, the cheapest way. The less expensive way, I should say, is the cheapest, to get it just in place and to get the courthouse, maybe we have to, is to go this route instead of. Waiting to build a 30-plus million dollar building down at the roundhouse that could, that maybe not happen in a long, long time, so. I, I think it's really the right course of action and, like I said, I, I hope the rest of you will support that, that movement if it happens.
Okay, you finished, sir?
I am.
All right.
I'm sorry to talk so long.
That's fine. You're a talker. It's okay. Good information, Dan. I didn't have a scheduled meeting other than this week. I did take the opportunity to meet with our new delegate in the 91st, Mr. Ian Masters. And I walked away from there very comfortable that he is going to do us a good job in that, in that district in particular. And I know that Commissioner Hardy was part of that process to, to vet him and. You know, he's, he's really excited about this. It's something that he wanted to do. He just wasn't ready to do it quite yet. He wanted maybe look at the next election. But really, really a smart guy and. I, I'm glad I met with him. I feel much more comfortable with him and. And I think you guys made a great choice. Well, the governor ended up making the choice.
The governor made the final choice, but I'll tell you, I have had the opportunity to work with Mr. Masters in my legislative role and he understands the legislative process. He understands that the legislature's a team sport. He understands that you have to be able to work with others to be able to make change. I will tell you, his interview with the Berkeley County Executive Committee was top-notch. And I feel that, you know, that was, he was one of the, of the, of the three names that we sent to the governor's office. And I commend the governor's office on, I believe, making the right choice for that seat.
John, I guess it still could be challenged by the Democrats.
It still could be challenged in court and, but I believe that that's, there's probably, there's been a, there's been a writ of mandamus filed by the Speaker of the House to at least, to put that off until after the legislative session.
Okay.
Just so we don't interrupt the legislative session. So they give us the Supreme Court or the intermediate Court of Appeals, whichever that goes to, I suspect it will probably go to the Supreme Court directly. It gives them some time to, to, to get, to get the information together that they need. And it also will not interrupt the representation that South Berkeley deserves through the legislative session.
All right, that's great. Very good. We've received two separate applications, one from Sean Hogbin for Berkeley County Farmland Protection Board. And also a new application from Richard Talbot, who is also Richard Louis Talbot, for the Berkeley County Farm, Farm Land Protection. And Penny, if we could reach out to them and get them scheduled to come in, please. Are there any openings on that board, sir?
As of right now, there is not, but there's going to be a couple of months and I think we're going to have some more applicants too, so.
Very good. Okay.
That's the Farmland Protection Board?
Yes. Next up is Will Lornson, fiduciary supervisor, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
We have tough questions, though.
I'm ready for them.
Your mother gave me a list of things to ask.
Commissioners, we have 23 estates for final or interim settlement for the month of February 2025. All estates proposed for settlement here this morning are identical to those found in your read ahead. Additionally, all estates proposed for settlement here this morning have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objection from any interested parties of these estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in full or in part by the creditors themselves. Or the estate has been declared to be insolvent, meaning that no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors alike. Without objection from any present interested party in the audience today, I ask for this commission's consideration for the approval of the 23 estates for final or interim settlement in the month of February 2025.
Good, thank you. You've heard Will's request, a motion to approve.
Removed.
I'm sorry. So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And of course I have two states here in my budget presentation. You're going to get quite a lot of me, so enjoy while you can.
We'll always look forward to seeing you, Will.
Double dose of Will.
There you go. Okay. Next up is Elaine Bartleson, Executive Director for Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Elaine.
I've been battling a sickness, so I'm going to do my best here.
We'll just keep you there.
Well, it's, this is the end of two weeks, so it better be over with soon. I'm here to request budget funding from Berkeley County and I appreciate the commission's support over the years and Mr. Whitaker's attendance at our board meetings. We're asking for $150,000 this year. And I know that's up from last year, but EPTA requires $1.4 million in local match to meet our federal money that we are allocated. And EPTA does a really great job in getting $975,000 in our contract revenue each year, which leaves us short about $400,000. I receive support from the city of Martinsburg, Berkeley County, Jefferson County, Ranson, Charlestown, Harpers Ferry, Boulevard. Jefferson County supports me at $100,000. So last year we were just shy of our goal. Our budget was a little less last year. We needed about $300,000 and we received about $275,000 in local support. The funds will be used for operating assistance of the Public Transit Authority and I will be emailing the commission. Our ridership was up 94% last year. We ended, it took us a while to recover from COVID-19, the pandemic, but we ended last fiscal year at the highest ridership ever at just under $266,000. So that's a lot of trips in a year. We had some significant achievements this last year. We did our groundbreaking on our new transit facility in Martinsburg. We purchased bus wayfinding signs that will be going up in this fiscal year, so we have new bus stop signs. We, we replaced two 26-passenger vehicles that were an 80/20 match of 53/39 federal capital funding. We had one expansion bus that was covered under the Volkswagen settlement. We had a bus that fell into that, so. The state DOT allocated funds to cover that bus at 100%, so we did replace that. Upcoming, we're in construction of our new facility. We anticipate moving in early '26. That will be EPTA's 50th year serving the Eastern Panhandle for public transportation. We'll install the bus stop signs. We have six buses on order, replacement buses on order, and four minivans, which do our non-emergent medical transportation. So we, EPTA, in our, in our contract revenue, supplies the local match for our capital funds that we get from the feds for equipment. We're currently in the middle of our transportation development plan with Matt at the Hagerstown Eastern Panhandle Metropolitan Planning Organization. And in that, the consultants are helping us redesign our routes to the new facility downtown Martinsburg. But it is a plan for the next five years' growth. And one of the big things we're looking at is service to spring mills. And that's a high priority. It was part of the survey we did that came back. So that is a top priority in this, that we will expand service into spring mills, which is, which is big.
Is there none now?
Well, we do service it for demand response for the medical appointments, but this is actually taking a route bus up to Walmart. Up.
That strip there.
Yeah, so, which is big. It was a very high priority in the survey we did. I just want to give you some facts about public transportation here. So part of our TDP had surveys. 26% of the riders were less than a year. So we had 26% new riders over the last year. 48% of the passengers who ride, 48%, 48% of passengers ride more than the previous year. 42% of the riders use public transit to go to work. 51% could not make their trip if service was not available. And 97% say EPTA's service is the same or better than over the previous year, which I'm very proud of.
Who was the go-to work one again?
It is the fifth, it is 42%. One of the things that came in the survey was they, the riders or people participating were asked to grade us. And so on a scale of one to five, but 4.6% rated our driver courtesy, which is very high. And we do, we take a lot of pride, the administrative staff at EPTA, training our drivers, teaching them. We hold quarterly trainings and I usually apply for grants for those and get them covered through Marshall University at 100%. I don't have to pay for bringing consultants in to train our people, so, which is awesome. And I will be forwarding all this on to you, but I would appreciate your consideration in helping me meet my local match. It's imperative. I mean, there are so many people that will not, that are transit-dependent between Berkeley and Jefferson County.
Yeah, we, we know that's important to be able to, to meet that. I, I think the thing that I really appreciate out of what, what you're doing is your flexibility. To be able to change what you do midstream sometimes and react to the necessity of making it all work and getting people where they need to be. You know, and getting people to work is, you know, you just said it was 42% of your, your concerns there and. That's a, that's a good thing, you know, that people may not have a, a means to be able to get to work, but this allows them. And at some point, they'll become totally self-sufficient or, you know, they may choose to ride the bus because it's cheaper than running their own car, you know?
Well, and I, I expect with the president's requests that everybody return to work, that our mark ridership will, will rise again too, so.
I would think so.
And that has been on the steady incline as well. EPTA's receiving no financial support to operate that transportation in the afternoon. So we're doing that with local match as well.
How much are your new buses? How much they cost?
About $300,000. The minivans are about $75,000 because they're all ADA. Every vehicle we have is ADA equipped, so.
What kind of mileage you get on them before they're pretty worn out?
Well, I just posted three vehicles on GovDeals yesterday and they have about 250-plus miles on them, which is way past their useful life. You know, we try really hard. We have two mechanics on staff. We maintain our own vehicles. We very rarely send stuff out except when somebody hits us. We have to go out and seek repair. Fortunately, we haven't been the result of those incidents. Other drivers have hit us.
I got to say, with 250,000 miles on a vehicle, there's a lot for their maintenance.
I, I, they're very good.
And they're still in good condition at 250,000 miles. They still have life left in them.
Yeah. Well, and, and we have a part-time gentleman who washes the vehicle and helps the drivers clean them, so that's been a high priority. Because everyone deserves to go to work and a, or shopping, or the medical appointments in a clean vehicle.
The patient transport vans, are they just medical appointments mostly?
They're demand response or they're, so we have demand response, which means an individual who cannot navigate to a bus stop or lives outside a, a mile from a bus stop. They can schedule a demand response ride. Now, they pay, depending on where they're going, where they're picked up and where they're going, either four to eight dollars per trip. We also offer Medicaid and Medicare transportation that are scheduled through two clearinghouses, one Motive Care and the other one MTM, which is the Medicare. We're just new into that because, you know, we're expecting some reduced funding from Shepherd because they're having challenges too. We have a contract with Shepherd and I already know that come fall, our service will be reduced there. And I had to figure out a way to kind of close that gap, so we started, just started doing Medicare transportation.
Couple of quick questions. What is your, what is your overall general revenue?
Our revenue? It's, it's about, well, two point, including grants?
No.
Okay. It's about 1.4 million.
Right. And then, but the number I was really getting at too is what is your contract revenue?
977.
That's, that's very impressive.
Yeah.
That's, that's very, very impressive that you are able to generate that much of your own revenue, so.
Well, and you know, we do that because we've developed these relationships with Harpers Ferry National Park. We've been there 35-plus years serving. There are drivers, our mechanic, they supply the vehicles. I did help the park get a grant for electric vehicles, so they are transitioning to electric next year.
And you said that local match number was about 400,000?
Yeah, for the municipalities.
That's what you need to generate through the municipalities, counties.
Bye, y'all. Everybody good?
Yep.
Thank you.
How many of us are there? You said five? Ranson, Charlestown.
Berkeley County, Jefferson County, Martinsburg, Ranson, who we are a line item on their budget. Charlestown, Harpers Ferry Boulevard. And Harpers Ferry and Boulevard have one stop each.
Ranson, you're probably a line item because of the track.
Very good. Thank you, man.
All right.
Thank you, Elaine.
We're going to, we're going to jump ahead.
Our, our board chair is here.
We can put him on the hot seat.
Yeah. These were the tough questions come.
Nick, are you ready to present your budget?
Sure.
I mean, it's kind of jumping our schedule a little bit further, but, you know, I don't want to have to make you sit there for 40 minutes either, so. Don't mind if you're ready.
Well, good. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you all doing?
Good morning. I'm ready when you're ready.
Good deal. So we have put in a budget request for 275,000 this year. We've, you all have, well, you see our budget every year and we, we generate about 90% of our own revenue at the airport. And in addition, we have a, well, we did an economic impact study and our, our economic impact study said we had about a 200 and, 240 million dollar economic impact on the, on the community each year. And then the state did one a couple of years later and said that we have about a 350,000, or 350 million dollar impact on the community each year. Now, what they do is they actually calculate it out, okay, if people are. Now, what they do is they actually calculate it out, okay, if people are flying in here for an event or something, how much are they spending on, you know, going out to eat and things like that? And they're kind of calculating all of that in there, whereas ours was a little more rudimentary. It was just looking at what kind of impact the people had as they were paying taxes into things here. For example, if they're staying in a hotel here, if they are, you know, if, if they're traveling to and from somewhere and they're spending money in the area, or if they are here because they are doing business in the area. And so it's probably one of the few organizations that actually generates more tax revenue than, than we, we request every year from the county. It's a, this year has been a, a very, it's been a struggle frankly for the airport. We've got, we couldn't exactly figure out what was going on until two or three months into the fiscal year, but we, our jet fuel sales dropped quite a bit. And our jet fuel sales are a big chunk of our budget. We, it was just kind of a perfect storm that we had the both military aircraft and a lot of the fractionally-owned aircraft, like through NetJets and Wheels Up and some of those. We quit seeing them, and we didn't know what was going on, so we did some research into that. And the military had been saying for years and years that they were going to stop military aircraft from going to any airport that did not have a military fuel contract. The reason we had never done that in the past is because historically that military fuel contract gave us anywhere from four to seven cents over our wholesale, our price on the fuel. And our cost to do business is about $1.30 per gallon, depending on how much we're selling. And so, you know, we have line guys to pay to actually pump that fuel, and we've got insurance and things like that that we have to have to do what we do there. So it didn't make any sense to do that, because we were, we actually would be losing money in order to, to get one of those. It worked for a really big airport like Dulles or somebody like that, but it just didn't work for us. So we revisited that. Last year, there was a new program that will allow us to at least recoup our cost on John Jet A if we're selling to, if we're selling to military folks. And so we're able now to, I think we're gonna, we're gonna end up, we're, we're in the process of applying for that now. It's a long application process. We won't know until October. We're, we're gonna send in a final document at the end of this month, and we'll know in October whether we've got it. It's, it would be highly likely that we would, but we're gonna have that plus about, plus about 10 cents on the gallon that we'll be able to take over and above what our cost to doing business is. And so, you know, we're, you know, and we, we are in a position as a, as essentially government entity that we're not here to necessarily make money, but we certainly can't lose money. And so, so we're trying to do as much as we can to make sure we're, is, as, we'd like to decrease our dependency on county funds and on city funds, even though we still need your partnership in order to be considered a regional airport. And so, but that being said, we, this process takes a long time, so we're not gonna even see the benefit of this until, until the fall. So, so we're getting very, very few military, military aircraft in. When we do get one in, it's usually because they had no other option. They had to be there. And so, and they have to get a special, special permission to do that. The other thing we noticed was, is we were dropping off on, on jet visits. Couldn't figure that out either. So we started talking to some of these folks that had been coming in regularly, like Net, I'll use NetJets as an example. Well, they've gone to a hub-and-spoke arrangement so that they are, and, and they have a hub at Dulles, and so they're fueling there. And wherever they're flying to, the only time they will stop for fuel now is at what they call a CAA airport. CAA stands for, stands for Commercial Aircraft Association. And typically, and, and it's, it's for, it's usually either for business jets or for, for people that own jets. And so it's a, it's a group that basically, you know, beats down the, the FBOs for as low of a cost as they can. And then they put that out to their board for a vote. We're going out for a vote the first week in March. So, you know, we've lost, you know, several thousand gallons of fuel sales through that over the course of this past seven or eight months. And we hope to be able to get that back sometime in, probably in, in April. We'll see, we'll start, what'll, what'll happen is we'll start to see them trickle back in again, because they've already got their route set typically for the near future. And so it's, once they realize we're a CAA airport, then they'll start coming there again. But the CAA is kind of like the military fuel. Our margin is way, way less than it would be otherwise. And so that's why we hadn't done that before, because we didn't feel like we needed to, because we were getting plenty of business. And so those two things, and I, I think we've included a P and L in there, and you'll see that we're, you know, that's, that's where we have an issue. We are right on budget with everything else except Jet A. And that's a, that's a big problem. And so we're, we're working on that. It's a, it's a temporary issue. We are addressing that. We, we think this next year is also gonna be a tough year. I mean, this past year, we've had to, you know, we, we've done some layoffs, we've done some reduction in hours and some other things to try to, to try to maintain. This year, we're probably gonna have to do a little bit more of that. But at the end of the day, we feel like we're gonna go into, to the '26, '27 fiscal year pretty strong, because we've got some things in place that are gonna, they're gonna keep that from happening. And we're also working with, now that we have three colleges, and we're, we're the only airport in the state that has three colleges, that are, they're doing business there. We'll have Blue Ridge Community Technical College, Marshall University, and Shepherd are already there. Their programs are starting to grow. Marshall finally has somebody on the ground that is working on bringing in students. And so that, we should see that program grow over the course of the next year. So that's, not only is it fuel sales, but it's a lot easier for us to attract business when they know that their workforce is being trained locally and that they can hire people right out of that pool. And so it's gonna be a huge help when Marshall's up and running, and it'll be even a bigger help when Blue Ridge is up and running. And so that'll all come in 20, in, in, in '25, Marshall's ramping up, but 20, probably sometime in, in '26 is when Blue Ridge will have their program completely operational. And so that's kind of where we are at the moment. While we're doing that, we're continuing to do everything we can to grow. We brought some new businesses on the field. We are in the process of, of talking to some folks about a, a, a public-private partnership to build some hangars out there, so that we don't have to invest any money in the building of the hangars, but we will have the benefit of additional aircraft on the field, and we'll be able to, again, there, it, this all kind of circulates around fuel sales. We're gonna be able to sell some, sell some more fuel. And so we're working on that. We are also working on a couple of other opportunities through various government contractors, but I have no idea where that's gonna go right now. So we're gonna continue to work on it, but that's, I'd afraid, I'm afraid of even making a prediction with that. And so outside of that, we continue to do everything we can to be a good community partner. We, we do, we have, oh, we were from eight to 10 homeschool groups that come out every year, and we do tours with them. And we do, they, we have a little place where they can do some, do a little class on aviation while they're there. We are in the process of, of working with the, the Guard, the 167th, on some property that, that they had had control of, that we're gonna get, we're gonna, we think we'll get back in '26. And that property, we're talking to, I just talked to Parks and Rec about that actually a couple of days ago. We're gonna try to see what we can do to give them some, some more space down on that end of town. And as you all know, our foundation is, is still working on putting together a pavilion up beside the outdoor educational play center that we have there now, so that, so that we can encourage the community to continue to come out and, and do things. And we do that too with our, with the independent celebration, as you all know too.
That'll great trunk of trees.
We thought we'd have about 100 people. We ended up with over 600 that, that day. That's a lot of kids.
Just a few questions, Nick. So going back to the fuel thing, and me and you had this discussion, you know, the business model has changed, and that's, that's a part of business. Business models are always in play, they're always in flux. You know, it just seems like everybody got a little smarter and a little tighter on their fuel. If you're able to navigate the application system on the military side, is that a federal reimbursement, or did you get what you're supposed to get right at the pump?
No. Well, so it's, so we get what we're supposed to get at the pump.
Okay. So you're not, you're not waiting on some long-term reimbursement from some federal agency?
No, thank God, no.
Right, okay. And then if you're successful in being able to join the CAA? And you, those routes are predetermined, but once you become, have that, that norma culture in your facility, they'll start to maybe reroute some, some traffic back, back your way?
Because we, we've talked to several, anytime we have a jet company, any, any aircraft that comes in, we try to be as hosp, as, you know, we, we try to show them as much hospitality as we can, and we try to be as, as kind to them as we can, because we know that we want repeat customers. And so we, we had quite a few NetJets that came through there before, and, and the, and the Wheels Up and some of the other ones. And so we're hoping that we're gonna be able to, they'll see, oh, gosh, they're at CAA Airport now, so we can go back there. And so they will start to kind of trickle back in and start to set us as one of their options.
And you said you generate about 90% of your own revenue?
Yes, sir.
And that's through hangar rentals and property rentals?
Property rentals, fuel sales.
And how are you on properties now? Are you full? Are you pretty?
So our hangars are completely full.
Right.
We actually need another hangar, and we're working on that right now. I'm trying to find some grant money to, to do that. And, and of course, some other, we're looking at some other avenues too, to bring in some businesses that would build their own hangars. And so we get revenue from that. Our, we do lease a lot of offices out. We have a total of three empty offices at the moment that we're in the process of trying to lease. And so we're, that's, that's all I have, though, are those three offices. And they're small, they're just, I think they're about 10 by 12 offices in the terminal there that were. We had individual businesses in each of those, and they've, over the course of a few months, have just kind of trickled out, so we gotta bring some new ones in. And frankly, after the pandemic, it was kind of tricky to, to get people to come back to the office for a while, so.
And Marshall has finally started bringing in some personnel and actually manning that operation?
Yeah.
What is, what is Blue Ridge portion? I mean, I know what Marshall does there. What does Blue Ridge do there?
So Blue Ridge, once, they are in the process of getting certification for their aircraft maintenance program.
Right.
And so they're gonna be able to train students to be able to take their A and P exam, and that's huge. We are, well, we're, we're talking to a prospect right now that, that was the very first question they had, is where does that workforce come from?
And, and then Shepherd, what is Shepherd doing there?
So Shepherd has a bachelor's degree in, in business administration with a concentration in aviation. And so that's more for people that want to go into aviation in some way, but they know that they don't want to be a mechanic. They, they may actually want to be a pilot, in some cases, a corporate pilot. Or they might want to, you know, ha, be in administration at an airport somewhere, because in, especially at, at these larger commercial airports, they have hundreds of people that are doing various things in administrative offices. And so there, that would definitely help with something like that.
Well, I would publicly recommend that any of our legislators that are listening, if there is any state dollars going to Marshall that's funneled to the Eastern Panhandle Airport for that program, that that money should be shifted to Shepherd. There's no reason that Marshall should have that facility in our backyard when we have Shepherd that could provide that here. So if there's any state money, and I'm a little off-topic here with what we're doing here, but if there's any of that money that's rolling into Marshall for that, that we should look at a shift in that to make sure that Shepherd has at least the, the financial abilities. I don't know if they have the wherewithal or the ability that they want to do that.
Yeah, I was gonna.
But they should, that should be in our own backyard.
Yeah, and I, so to, to clarify that, so actually Shepherd and Marshall are actually, you know, working together on, so Shepherd's degree is, the only two aviation-rated classes that they have that, that do at the airport are the, are ground school for, for like, if you want to get your pilot's license. And so the Marshall School is teaching the flying. And so Shepherd kind of needs Marshall to have that, to, to be able to have that ground school aspect of their program at the moment. I, I don't disagree with you that ultimately it's great.
Moving forward, that needs to be their program.
It'd be great if Shepherd could do that, but yeah, realistically, it's a very expensive program, and Marshall has, has built up a very, a very good reputation in that. And so at least to, up to now, they, they have worked well together, and I think they complement one another. But we need to, you know, that's, well, and that's one of the reasons that, that we have Blue Ridge doing this program. Marshall could have done that program too. But Blue Ridge really, you know, they said they wanted to do that, and we are obviously going to partner with the local entity anytime we can, anytime we have that opportunity.
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity to have all three of them involved in it personally. That's, everybody gets, gets a piece of it, and they're an area of expertise perhaps.
Can I ask a question while we're on that? So do they pay you to be there? Or is it, you only earn money off the jet fuel that they use?
The, so Marshall, once they are, so Marshall has had a program, they've only had a few students so far. It's because they did not have somebody that was, they didn't have somebody in the role of business development and of recruiting students specifically to that, to our program. And so they, this guy, and I've known this guy for a decade, and so, and I think he'll do a really good job with that. He just started doing this, like, in the past, you know, week or so. And so, and he's got a lot of energy and a lot of ideas. And so I think that, so, so our agreement with them was, once you start getting students in and you're generating revenue, then we have a space for them now. It's a, it's just one small area. And once they start generating revenue, we're thinking probably, you know, this, definitely during the next fiscal year, they're gonna start paying rent on that space. So for now, we're.
Little dumb questions, right? I know, I mean, about have it. When you sell fuel, it, it, you got a Cub plane, and you got a jet. Do they use a different type of fuel, I assume?
Yep, so one.
And are there, how many different grades of fuel are there? I mean, there's jet fuel, I assume, there's, what the?
Right.
Plane like Jim has, it uses.
Avgas. Yep. Yeah, and one of them, what's crazy.
Basically, what you sell is jet fuel.
We sell both, actually.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, so the.
There's two types in them.
Right. And so, you know, as, as Jim was saying, there's a, there's the, you know, the low lid for.
Most limited sale of those is probably jet fuel, I assume.
There's a much larger margin on jet fuel. The people that are flying piston airplanes, they might only take eight or 10 gallons, but there's a lot of them.
Compared to the size of the jet, is it all the same then?
Yeah.
In other words, if I'm flying the big boy up in the?
Yep, there's.
Private jet, there's, still, jet fuel's jet fuel.
Correct. And yeah, and it's actually just refined kerosene is all it is.
Is that all it is?
Yep.
That doesn't gel at, at zero degrees. You have a additive that goes in them.
It's called fizzy, yeah.
Gotta be careful with that. They don't run on gelled fuel.
At least not well, right? Not for long.
That's right. You're not for too long.
They turn into a brick after a while.
Yep, yep.
Not a good situation.
Do you have anything, Mr. Whitaker?
No, I tell you, it is a, like John had said, it's sometimes, it's cyclical when it comes to, you know, business models change and, and, you know, they, it's, it's not that we're not keeping up on it out there, it's just they change. And when they do change, we, we start ruffling through the papers and figuring out what we need to do to make it work. And I commend Nick and the staff out there. They, they do a lot of in-house stuff that, just like our, you know, our, our county, you know, with Jack Lang and everything, they, they, they do a lot of in-house stuff out there that.
Did you get your door fixed?
We did, yeah.
It was cold that night, that's for sure.
Yep.
But they got it fixed and, little ancillary problems with a little bit of frozen pipe a little, but they got that done.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, and I, you know, and of course, Mr. Whitaker helped, helped us with that. And, and each one of you individually have really gone out of your way to help the airport, since, at least since I've been there. And I just wanted to say thank you all collectively and individually for all you all have done for the Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport.
And Nick, it sounds like the, the fuel co-op is hurting you with, with all these folks coming together and going to the.
Right, it's, it really.
Basically pushing, pushing everybody down.
Yep.
I know that you were, and I'm, I'm not asking for anything that's, you know, executive session stuff, but I know you were involved in at least one or two land sales. Were they able to go through? Yes, no?
So, we, we've got one and honestly, if you'd asked me this question a month ago, I'd have said, I am very, very doubtful. Now, I have a little more hope in that one. They um, they just came out and did a, an alt survey and they're looking at uh, they're trying, they say that they're trying to, to wrap up financing um, on the property. And so, fingers crossed, we're hoping that that deal is going to go sometime in the next six months. Um, it is, we, there's, you know, no, well, when I, I've been industrial development for many, many years and I can tell you that I don't ever call it done until somebody's got a check in their hand, but-
Right. And, and the prop, the additional property that you purchased uh back probably a year ago now
Right.
Uh, have you been able to make any improvements there or, or have a plan for that?
So, yeah, it's, we have included it as part of our master plan. Um, and so, what we're looking at there is ultimately, we would like to either put some hangars out there or, the issue with that property has always been that it's, it's in kind of an odd spot. But for us, it's actually not in that odd of a spot. Because if we're doing T-hangers, like for small planes, we can have them come out onto an existing taxi lane and go out to the runway. But if it's a bigger business and we're, and actually, I've been marketing it as a larger plot because I'm hoping that we can bring somebody in that wants to build a large facility there. And then they would have to bring out a taxi lane onto taxiway Alpha, which is the closest uh taxiway to that property. And if they do that, it will not only serve them, but it will benefit the pilots that are already leasing hangars over on that side of the field because it gives them another option to come in and out. And so, it'll help with traffic flow quite a bit then too. So we're, you know, we're, we're marketing as a larger property, but if we don't uh get any takers there, because that's going to be kind of expensive to do that uh taxiing out, we, then we do have a backup, which is going to be to put T-hangers out there when, next time we need to, to do that.
Great. What do you get hanging on?
Yeah. Have they started the electric airplanes yet?
Well, so we are partnering with Beta and Beta, if you, you can just, I forgot, their website is Beta something. If you just, if you Google them, they, Beta is one of the leaders in electric airplanes. Um, I have uh, I used to say, I think we had the only rapid charger in the state that was uh not for Teslas. And uh, we got it right out at the airport, so any of you got an electric car?
You do already have chargers?
Yep, we have, we have a charger.
Next question.
Yeah, it's, and it's specific, it's specifically for their aircraft, and their aircraft is awesome. It's, it can either take off like a helicopter or it can take off like an airplane. They're gonna, they're starting out using it for, for um cargo, for small cargo trips. And so, it'll take off like an airplane when they do that. But in their, their hope in the future is that they'll use it for transporting people like a, like an air taxi around big cities. And so, those will take off and land, uh, you know, they'll, they'll be able to hover. And so, but when you hover, it uses a whole lot more fuel or a whole lot more battery power than if they're just taking off like that. But um, Beta has, they have um charging stations for their aircraft from uh New York Vermont area all the way down the east coast, and we're, we are one of those. So we're excited to see that. They, they have, we just went up there in December and met with them and they said that we're, they're anticipating seeing some uh flights begin in and out of our airport sometime in twenty-five. So, so that's exciting.
All right, Nick, well, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Very informative presentation. And uh, our next, our next uh
Amy's not here yet.
Is at ten fifty-five, so we'll go take a break until then.
We're back in session. Next up is Amy Orndorf, Executive Director of Brookly County Senior Services. Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen and Ms. Penny. Just wanted to come before you, first of all, to thank you so much for everything that you've done for us this past year. As many years as the Director of the Center. I'm not surprised by your kindness and your generosity. We truly appreciate it and thank you for that. Just want to go through a few things, hit a few highlights of things that have happened this year. Not going to go through all of the numbers. You guys have those in our application. But I think it's always important to emphasize what we do, just because a lot of people don't realize the caliber of what our services entail. So this year, we have expanded some of our services. One of our, we've added a program that's called a Homemaker Program. And with that, a lot of times, we have a lot of restrictions on what we can do in the home to take care of seniors that are not able to take care of themselves anymore. And those restrictions primarily are, we go in to take care of their personal needs. They're bathing, they're dressing, they're grooming. Some light housekeeping and meal preparation. But as we all know, things get piled up, our house gets dusty, which can also create an unsafe environment. So we've started a Homemaker Program, which allows a staff member to go into the homes of these seniors and do light housework. So they can vacuum, they can do additional laundry if needed, they can dust. Especially during the spring and in the fall, when the seasons are changing, a lot of time dust accumulates. So we're able to provide that service now in conjunction with the other in-home care services that we offer. We're also very excited about a new training that we're going to offer. We've started kind of piloting a little bit so that we can work out the bugs with staff. This is called a virtual dementia tour. So what this will do, it's basically a simulation so that caregivers and the community can learn what it's actually like for those with Alzheimer's or dementia diagnosis, to be able to experience some of the things that those people are going through. It alters a lot of your senses, so there's inserts that are put in the shoes to represent neuropathy. The participant going through the training will have a headset on with some ungodly noises, just for distractional purposes. Because a lot of times, those with an Alzheimer's or dementia diagnosis, they can't focus on what you're saying. Because there's all kinds of things just going through their head all the time and they can't turn it off. There's also goggles are put on to alter the vision, and gloves are put on to alter their dexterity with their fingers. So the way this works is that the participant going through the training will go into a room with a staff member of ours. And we give them five tasks. They have to fold a towel, they have to find a T-shirt. I believe it's they have to wash a dish, they have to open a can of soup. So these are all things that we expect someone with an Alzheimer's or dementia diagnosis to do on a daily basis. Because it doesn't seem like it's that difficult. And what we're finding is, we've sent some of our staff through this. They are having a better appreciation of, you know, with our Caregiver Support Services Department. They're finding that, oh, this is why this person's doing this when they come in, so we need to alter what we do to be able to adjust. We have the philosophy that people with an Alzheimer's or dementia diagnosis, they no longer live in our world. We now need to adapt and live in theirs. So this training's really helping to promote that. So throughout the year, you may be seeing some advertisements for that. Like I said, we're starting with training the staff first. This includes those that are directly in the Caregiver Support Services Department, our drivers. We want every staff member, our in-home care workers, every staff member, we want to go through this training. Because identifying an Alzheimer's or dementia diagnosis is imperative for us. Because the sooner we catch it, the sooner we can address it and help the caregivers. The next phase of this training will be to roll it out to the caregivers. So that as they're overwhelmed, it kind of puts in the back of their mind what is happening and why it's happening. So education for us is huge. We think the more that you can educate and the more you're going to be able to help our seniors. So we're really excited to have this. And then eventually, we'll roll it out to the community. We're staying very busy, lots of parties, lots of things happening. For those of you that don't know, we have about 100 staff members. So the majority of those work out in the field, so it's our drivers. A large portion of that are in-home care staff and those providing relief for caregivers in the home so that they can get a break and we sit with their loved one while they do that. We also deliver meals. We are different than Meals on Wheels in that we don't charge for our meals. So our meals are provided, we're covered under the Older Americans Act. So these meals are provided to homebound seniors on a donation basis. So if they can afford 50 cents, great. If they can't afford anything, we're still going to feed them. And what we're finding is, especially this time of year, a lot of seniors, we're finding more and more seniors that have fallen. So if our staff member wouldn't have gone in, who knows how long this person would have laid in the floor. So I just want to share a story with you that we had happen a couple of months ago. We had a in-home care member, he's on our Medicaid, one of our Medicaid programs. And through some extenuating circumstances, he lost his home. So at four o'clock on a Friday afternoon, he had gained some resources to be able to stay in a hotel. Well, at four o'clock on a Friday afternoon, the hotel said, well, your time is up, we have no choice but to put you out. So this gentleman had his dog, a bag of belongings, and an oxygen tank, and was put into a hallway at a local hotel. The hotel had no means to be able to keep him, so he called our office. So we immediately sent our nurse and one of our in-home care office staff with him. We tried to get him into the rescue mission. They had space, they were incredible to work with, they were phenomenal. The problem was, he had oxygen, so they wouldn't allow him to stay. So we worked with some other resources, and at about 10:30 on that Friday night, we were able to get him into another hotel. So I share this story with you just because we're open Monday through Friday, eight to four, but we work around the clock. And for any of you that's tried to find resources on a Friday evening at six or seven o'clock, it's next to impossible. So we were able to get this gentleman into a hotel where he stayed for another 13 days. And then we were able to get him into an apartment building. So, you know, our services, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I do want to share with you how important the funding that we receive from you guys are. Because it allows us to extend those services and it allows us to take care of our seniors in our community.
Just a comment. I know some of the stuff that you've mentioned, I've been through a little bit of it with my parents. But one of the hardest things, I think, was having a stranger come in my parents' home to help out. That was a difficult challenge for my mom, really. And I was just wondering, is there an easy way that you ease into it? Or you educate the giver to go into, you know?
Yeah, and that's a great question. I mean, first of all, you're opening up your home, so you're becoming very vulnerable. So all of our staff are fingerprinted and background checked. They're ran through a federal registry as well as a local state registry to ensure, you know, they have a clean record. And what we typically do is we send our nurse first, who does the assessment. So she begins the relationship and developing the rapport. And then, once we assign a home health aide, what we typically do is have that nurse go back with that home health aide to introduce. Because there's already a little bit of trust established. And then we do periodic spot checks, just to make sure that the relationship is okay, things are going well. We encourage our staff to just take it slow the first, you know, first few visits. Our hands are tied with a lot of our regulations, but at the end of the day, what's more important, I would much rather have to explain a regulation, why a regulation wasn't followed, in order to build a relationship and establish that trust. I mean, these people are, they're given baths. I mean, there's no time that you're more vulnerable than when you're getting a bath. So laying that groundwork and establishing that relationship is first and foremost for us.
Anybody with an advanced illness, probably even another layer of penetration you have to.
It is. It is. And that's why we try to keep, anytime, especially with our in-home care, we try to keep the same worker in the same home consistently. There are times we have to switch it up. Sometimes, you know, we jokingly say we need to divorce these two because it's just not working. So sometimes you have to switch things up. But for the most part, we try to keep the consistency, especially with someone with a known dementia or Alzheimer's diagnosis.
After serving on the board for the last two years, I will say this to Amy and her staff. They do an incredible job of monitoring these situations. And if there's anything negative at all that comes up, they address the issue right away. And either correct it by removing that person, or you know what I'm saying. So it's not like they just let it go and let it fester. So they do a terrific job over there.
That's why she was named the Director of the Year.
Thank you.
Director. And we have the best senior center in West Virginia.
We do.
Preaching to the choir. I've been involved with Amy for a long time at the Senior Center. And we've done a lot of cool stuff. I attended a Halloween party over there. And I think I was there for a dance and, you know, I've come over and had lunch and have tried to support the Senior Center in any way that I possibly could, through LITA funds and other things. And your staff is wonderful, your meals are great. And, you know, you guys are so engaging with your clients. And when I go there for one of those events, I can always tell that everyone is so excited to be there. It's really a community.
They are. And it's hard on days where we have to close, you know, and making the decision, I was talking with Jim earlier. It's hard, okay, do we close, do we stay open? Because, you know, the days that we close, those seniors, they look forward to getting out and.
Yeah, I think when I came over, we weren't far out of like COVID, and you guys had, you know, it was kind of reestablishing and everything. And everyone was just so excited to be back. I remember that feeling.
Yeah, we were closed, the building itself was closed for 475 days. But our staff never missed a day of work. You know, we were out within the restrictions and what we were allowed to do. But everyone there just truly has a heart for seniors. And so many times, they get forgotten. And it's infuriating that, you know, our seniors are being forgotten because they're our history. And, you know, our services allow them to stay in their homes where they're most comfortable.
Is your hot cold truck in good shape?
It's in, our 2010 is starting to give us some issues.
I've driven that one before.
Yeah, yeah, you did, yes.
I've driven the hot cold truck before, yeah.
Yeah, so we got our third hot cold truck over the summer. But we're still band-aiding the 2010 because they're very expensive to replace. And it's much better to put a few thousand dollars into one than have to replace one. So we now have three hot cold trucks that go in three different directions, which is a huge blessing.
What usually goes to chassis or the box?
Usually it's the transmission, surprisingly.
Ford Rangers with like boxes on the back?
Yeah, they've been modified and customized, yeah.
Just boys, anything you'd like to add?
They'll do a great job.
Thank you.
I tell the story on the quality of the meals that I was there recently, a few months ago, when they hosted the Rotary, Rotary couldn't use the Holiday Inn, so they decided to go over there. And I stopped by just to drop a check off or something. Amy said, well, staple lunch, so I did. And everybody was impressed about how great the food was. And then Amy was talking to them, explaining all the activities there, as she said. And by the way, that's the same lunch that our seniors got today too. And they were blown away about, they thought maybe they fixed this special meal just for them.
Right.
And now they want to come back when they don't, when they can't use the Holiday Inn and have it there.
Yeah, we hosted them once in January.
Recently, right?
We hosted them again in January for the second time. And then they have two other dates throughout the end of the year. So and they've said that they're they have dates, they've only gone to the summer. So once they make their fall and winter schedule, they want to come back a few times, so.
I I know you guys do great work over there. You know, in my previous work, I was able to participate in some fire safety stuff with with your residents or not residents, but the folks that come enjoy the activities there. But one of the cutest things about that whole bunch is to watch them at a volleyball game at Mussumon High School.
Oh, yes.
They got a fan club.
They do.
They do. And that's cool. Those ladies up there and men yelling for that, those young ladies out there playing volleyball, it's it's cool.
Yeah, and the Mussumon volleyball team, they are great with our seniors. They they come and they play the chair volleyball at the senior center. And the first time we went, we took, I think, maybe eight or 10. And this last time we went, we had 42 that went. So we had an entire section, so it was like the student section and then the senior section. And they were, they were chanting back and forth with the students and the students were engaging with the seniors.
Yeah, but that's good for them. It's good, it's good for everybody. It's good for those young children to see that and it's, it brings some life and excitement back.
It does.
Seniors and stuff, it's just all good stuff.
And the girls are great, they fist bump the seniors as their names are being called. And we're doing more outings. We went to a box, flying boxcars games last summer and we're planning two this year because it was so successful. We took a trip to see a sight and sound show at the end of last year. We have one scheduled for later this year. So, you know, just getting them out of the four walls of the senior center is is on on the the agenda for this year.
They don't have any AED over there yet, do they?
We don't.
That's my fault.
That's okay.
I've been procrastinating on that, but they're ready to come. I just need to schedule between you and them.
Sounds good.
Our Amy story is going to donate a AED for the center, install it, train everybody on staff how to use it and everything, so.
Do they come in on Saturdays?
No, no, we're typically there Monday through Friday. We do have some Saturday events.
I was just wondering, you know, we had a farmer's market down at the Roundhouse. I didn't know if there was a way to get them to bring them to the farmer's market or not.
We could probably work something out, yeah. That that would be great, especially they get the farmer's market vouchers.
Yeah.
That would be fantastic, yes, yeah, that would be great. Let's let's connect.
It starts in the in the spring and it's it's every Saturday.
And that program, there's a portion of that program, it's like a two-for-one, three-for-one. There was some legislation that was passed on that for the snack and for the fresh fruits and vegetables and stuff, like a like $3 for every $1 that they receive. So trying to get fresh fruits and vegetables and people's hands who need them the most.
Be our last presenter of our morning session. Are there any items for the public? Records show there's nobody here other than our league. There's no reason for executive session, correct? Okay, we're on break and we'll return at 2:05.